All right, Chair Dempsey.
Here.
Vice Chair Starlee.
Here.
Member Lester.
Here.
Member Mitchell.
Here.
Member Norville.
Here.
Okay. All right. The first thing on the agenda is a presentation.
I think that's...
We have none scheduled.
It's...it is later. It's under old business.
Okay, we typically do public input first.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would...has a public input that would like to speak to the board or the audience? Anyone? Okay. Quick silence, my phone, I can already hear it starting to talk to me. All right. Consent agenda. I'm having a hard time reading this. Consider the approval of the airport board meeting minutes from July. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to...
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Gary made a motion to approve the minutes as they were written and Mr. Mitchell seconded it.
All right. Chair Dempsey. Do you agree?
Agree.
Vice Chair Starlee.
Agreed.
Member Lester.
Yep.
Member Norville.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes stand approved. Old business. FAA restrictions on the approaches, is that what your presentation was about? All right, or is that...
Yes, sir. We'd like to call consultant, GAI consultants to the podium to give a presentation on this and our other projects that are in progress now. You'll notice there's a handout in front of each of you that kind of corresponds with that, with this presentation. Just give me a minute to switch over to the podium.
Okay. And if you would, would you introduce yourself to the board and to the audience and who you work for?
Sure. My name is Dan Nichols with GAI Consultants. We're one of the engineering consultants for the airport.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
So I'm going to give you guys a brief rundown of all the ongoing projects, everything, the status of where we're at with every project. And then at the end, I'll be talking about a few of the documents and exhibits that I have distributed to each of you. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at them or review them yet, but I'll go through each of them in detail. First project is the terminal apron infill. The first portion of that project was the removal of the dilapidated hangars and restoration of that area. That work is complete. The area is restored with turf. The second phase of that project...
Just move that microphone up just a little bit.
Yeah. The second phase of the project is, it was originally built to be an apron infill in the location where the hangars were removed, but right now the airport and tenants are working on determining the highest and best use of where that apron is going, so we'll have an update on that soon.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next project, the taxiway Charlie rehabilitation. Construction is complete right now. We're just waiting on a couple of final documents from the contractor for the administrative closeout, and then we'll be able to close both the project and the grants out. We do expect to have that completed within the next few weeks. Next on the list is the marking and signage rehabilitation. The first portion of that project was a full rehabilitation of the airfield markings that was completed six months ago, roughly six months ago, by Danton Hydro Blasting and, oh man, the striping contractor I'm...
Better Bearcades?
No. Emerald Coast Striping. They completed their work, and we are on to the second phase of the project, which is a rehabilitation of the signage on the airfield. There is an exhibit in front of you that kind of details the biggest changes that's happening with that. Primarily, we're going through in replacing all the signs that are more than five years old. Any of the signs that are associated with taxiway Alpha or taxiway Bravo, we try to make those a lower priority since we're working on a rehabilitation, reconstruction of taxiway Alpha this year, and we have a reconstruction of taxiway Bravo coming up in a couple of years. So those were lower on the priority list, but every other sign that needed, needed or is due for a complete replacement is included in the project. The exhibit that we prepared specifically highlights a few of the intersections where we're moving signs, removing signs, adding new signs. And I'll go through that real quick. So the first intersection, the top left, the only really important sign to note is the location of the traffic pattern altitude restrictions. It's moving from a position that was closer to the Bravo Charlie intersection. It'll be just outbound of the runway holding position sign on taxiway Bravo for runway 220. So it puts it in a more logical location that's more in line with what a pilot would expect to find on the airfield when they're coming up to that runway. Next major intersection change is the Bravo Echo intersection, which has been, it's been a confusing intersection, and it's listed as a hotspot on the airport diagram. It has been confusing for a while, up until we removed a bunch of the pavement with the taxiway Charlie project. Now with the signage rehabilitation, we had the opportunity to more correctly sign that to make it a lot easier and less confusing for the pilots. So there was, in the existing, on the left side of the screen, an Echo taxiway directional sign that was actually, that's not really a required sign. It's in the wrong location, wrong legend for what it was trying to convey. Typically, you don't put directional signs after the intersection. They come before the turning point in the direction. So on runway 220, we've added a directional sign for Bravo in addition to the Echo directional sign, so that'll clarify the left turns that you make coming off of the 20 end. We've also added Bravo directional signs on either side, or I think on the north side of runway 220 to help clarify once you're coming up to that intersection. And then we've also added Bravo location and Echo directional signs on either side of 220 to help, just help pilots in general. And then that same traffic pattern altitude sign is shown at the bottom being added. Moving on. Next intersection with a slight change was the taxiway Alpha and Bravo intersection. There was a sign there that just called out Alpha location, Alpha direction, and Bravo to the left. That sign should have included a Bravo to the right direction as well, since that turning movement is marked, so that's being added. That sign will be demolished. The pad will be re-poured for the larger sign. And then similar to the 220 runway, the traffic pattern altitude directional sign, we're adding another one in the correct location this time, just outbound of the runway holding position sign. And then finally, the only other big sign to note that's being added is we're adding a stop and contact air traffic control tower just outbound of Baker Aviation's property. So they'll have the same direction and non-movementary marking as the T-hangers do on the other side and as some of the tenants do down on the Foxtrot taxiway. So everyone will have the same sign, same legend, same direction. Other than that, we're replacing, you can see in some of the exhibits, the sign symbols are colored in with black or they have a hash marking on them. The colored in black means it's a brand-new sign. The hash markings within the sign just mean that we're replacing panels and refreshing the sign. So it should look like almost a brand-new airfield out there once they get done with the signage. And we expect the contractor, we just had our construction kickoff meeting last Friday. They're in the submittal process. They're ordering materials, ordering signs, so we expect them to have everything in and installed no later than Christmas.
Okay.
Next on the list is the AWAS, the backup weather equipment.
Hang on just for a second.
Sure.
Any questions or comments for this gentleman on the signage?
No.
Everybody good?
Sorry, I ran through a little bit of that pretty quickly.
We're good.
No questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. The next on the list I have is the AWAS, the backup weather equipment. We went through the initial bidding process with the bid documents that we prepared the first time around, and we did not receive any bids. From there, we worked with the city and reached out to a few select contractors that we know do the work and have done the work or similar work in the area, and we requested a private solicitation if anyone was interested in doing the work. We did get feedback from two contractors, both of which submitted a bid. They also submitted kind of a different proposal from what was originally, what was originally designed, something that would be within budget. So we received two qualified bids, one from each contractor, and I don't know if we've announced twos, or is that on the 27th?
27th.
27th, yes.
So the recommendation reward for the contractor and then their contract will be on the 27th agenda for the city commission. So we're expected, once that's done, we'll likely have a construction kickoff meeting a few weeks following, once all the contracts are worked out, and then it'll be submittal process and ordering equipment. And then from that point, it'll just be lead time, however long it takes to get it. Some of the equipment for the backup weather can have longer lead times, so it's reasonable to expect 12 to 16 weeks before everything's fully installed. Next is taxiway Alfred reconstruction. The survey and the geotech work in the field has been completed. We have started the schematic design. We're just waiting to get the geotech and the survey results so that we can proceed. We expect to have a schematic design review meeting with the airport by the end of October. Fuel farm rehabilitation. Also, survey and geotech work has been completed in the field. We have been in the field to verify the survey. We've gotten that back. We're already underway with the preliminary design. And also, similar to the taxiway Alfred reconstruction, we expect mid to late October to have our first draft, first design, submittal, two-year report for their review, comment, and any corrections before we move on to final design. Last project update, most recent one, was the spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan. For that, we're working on putting together the SPCC plan for the fuel farm, for the airport. We've been around and talked to two of the tenants so far, inventory, the fuel farm, the diesel generator for the airfield electrical vault. So we're gathering information at the moment, and once we finish gathering the rest of the information from the tenants, we'll put together the plan, and we'll submit that in draft for the airport to review. Once we've gathered all the data, it takes roughly four to six weeks to fully write the plan and have it deliverable ready. So again, I expect maybe first week in November, second week in November, having a draft to the airport for their review and comment. Next is the discussion that was, I believe, on the original agenda, the OFZ and the approach restrictions from the FAA. So recently, we received an airspace notification and communication from the FAA describing some restrictions to the runway and some violations that will have to be addressed at some point. The most and primary issue relates to the runway obstacle-free zone. One of the handouts that I gave you guys explains what the obstacle-free, obstacle-free zone is. It's an operational surface that has to be cut clear of anything unless it's aviation-specific. So if it's runway, runway end identifier lights, PAPs, runway light signs, anything on a frangible mounting, those things are allowed in the OFZ. But if it's something that's non-frangibly mounted, like fence or a roadway or anything that's not necessary for aviation use, then that OFZ area has to be totally clear of those objects. So the issue that we're running into right now is that the OFZ is defined as an area centered on the runway center line that extends 200 feet beyond the end of each runway. The runway ends are defined as the end of the usable pavement.
Can you get a little closer to the mine group?
Sure.
Thank you.
No, the runway obstacle-free zone extends 200 feet beyond the end of the runway, and the runway ends are defined as the usable end of the pavement. The width is defined by the size of the aircraft that use the airport. So the critical aircraft for New Suburna is still the Cessna Citation 560 XL. The more modern, I guess, the newest current model of that 560 XL is the XLS, both of which have max takeoff weights of 20,200 pounds. So for the OFZ description, anything over 12,500 pounds is determined to be a large aircraft. So the dimensions that were held to protect and make sure that we have are 200 by 400, so 200 off the end of the usable pavement and 400 foot wide. Off the seven end of the runway, unfortunately, we only have 90 feet on the nearest side. So the area in red that you see in that exhibit is the area that falls outside the fence for the runway obstacle-free zone. So that fence line does cut through the OFZ, and that is the OFZ violation that the FAA is most concerned about. And then in terms of the other end of the runway, we're a little bit closer, but we still have the same issue. There is fence line 35 feet into the OFZ on the nearest side, and I think it's 10 or 15 feet on the other side. So in the FAA's eyes, they are expecting the runway physical end of the pavement to be shortened to the point that there are no obstacles within the OFZ. The only other option would be removing fence line or removing any other obstructions within that area. So I think the latest discussions with the FAA was that they would be amenable to us addressing it within the taxiway Bravo project, because that made the most sense. So that does give us...
Say that one's more, sir.
So the last conversations we had with the FAA, they were agreeable to us addressing the OFZ issues once we do the taxiway Bravo design. So the Bravo design is scheduled three years out, roughly. So they are giving us some time to address it. They're not going to impose any additional restrictions or force, you know, us to close the runway or anything like that. So they're allowing us the time to address the issue, which is...
In what branch of the FAA are you working with specifically?
We work with the Orlando ADO.
Okay.
Yeah. So any questions on the OFZ, the description, or the exhibits that you guys are looking at?
Last time I asked how tall the fence had to be.
What was, there was a question?
The obstruction at the, across Sunset there was the height of the fence. And I asked how high fence is required to be.
So the height of the fence compared to the end of the runway has to do with the approach slopes, and that's actually a separate issue from the OFZ. More often than not, the FAA is allow, or they allow putting obstruction lights on the fence if you do have some penetrations to Part 77 surfaces, but the OFZ penetration is more critical in their eyes. So at this point, they're not as concerned about the height of the fence as they are the fact that the fence is there in general.
What if it was fractible?
I'm not aware of frangible fencing.
You saw halfway through the post. If you hit it, you drag the fence with you.
Yeah, I, the problem with that is that the FAA wants nothing that doesn't have an aviation use within the OFZ. So it's more, it's fence in general they're not okay with.
Well, then take the fence down.
I mean, that's, that's an option. That just...
Seems easier than moving the taxiway.
Right. The problem would be the security for the airport at that point. We still have to provide a safe and secure airfield, make sure civilians aren't able to get in.
But isn't that going to go from this diagram? You've got, like, right here? This is your fence here?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yeah, the end, the end of the physical runway would need to move 110 feet in, roughly.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. That's, that is the issue. So in order to clear the fence line totally from the OFZ, it'd be plus or minus 110 feet of chopping off part of the end of the runway to accomplish that.
And then the problem you have is the public.
For?
Well, because of where this is located. We've already heard all the BITCH about this because the fact that you would have to close that to get your length, and these people that live over here...
Sure.
They don't want us to do that because of the way everything is already over there. Now, my personal opinion, everybody's got one. For me, that's the best way.
To move the end of the runway?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's a lot more cost-effective, won't cost us that much, won't take us that much time, and the way I look at this whole scenario is, is that they have plenty of ways to get out. They can go right here on the side to US-1, come across here, go to Turnbull Bay, come down Industrial, then go, if they want to go to Turnbull, they go over there. Because it's not that much, you're not talking about that much that we're losing, but they won't be able to drive because you can't.
Right. So are you saying the, your preference would be taking out the road or the run, or shortening the runway?
No.
No?
I'm saying to take out the road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, if the, if the road goes away, the fence could be relocated, and then it's outside the OFZ, and would no longer be an issue.
Right.
Are we actively working on this now, or are we waiting until the 11th hour?
To...
To come up with solutions for 725.
Well, we, well, we have, they did a study, we have a study that's already been done, I think, a few years ago, that somebody did all the legwork for us to determine what the best, you know? And we have issues with, you know, not only that runway, but also on 129, you know, they wanted to, we wanted to extend that. So there's challenges, no matter which way we do it. This is probably the, seems to be, like I said, an opinion, is that this seems to be the least, this seems to be the cheapest way.
Right.
You can't, we're not going to move US-1. There's no way you're going to get that. That's going to be too cost prohibitive, and this road, if you had to sacrifice something, but again, that's, that's just my opinion. That seems to be the cheapest way.
Well, it is, and not only that, we're really not sacrificing that much of the road. It is an inconvenience for the people that live here, you know, in Alsboro, I understand, and that was the big hoo-ha when we went through this before. But this is the most logical. And if you've got to have, you know, 5,000 feet, you've got to have 5,000 feet. I mean, especially if we're going to get something a little bigger to fly in here.
Yep.
I mean, it is what it is. It's black and white. There's no other, and that's the easiest.
Right. Yeah, there's, unfortunately, on the 25 end, there's nothing to do other than shorten the runway slightly to get out of the fence line and off the sidewalk there. But yes, the seven end, a closure of the road, relocation of the fence line, that would satisfy the requirement.
Couldn't we also, instead of having to, of course, I guess it really wouldn't matter, you know, it's, it could be a fence that is, like, we have a gate on it. In other words, it would have a gate that could be open if it was necessary that we needed to open it, and we could have light of light or something on the top of the fence just to, for the planes or whatever to notice that, hey, we've changed this, blah, blah, blah. And then that way, it would still have the fence, but if the fence needed to be moved at any time for any reason, there would be a gate here, okay? And then there would be a gate here, and it would be a lockable gate.
So the downside to that would be that the road is still kind of considered the same as the fence line? It's a non-aviation use, so they won't allow a road?
So we can't, we have to take it out?
Yeah. The road can't be in the OFZ. The only thing that can be in the OFZ is graded turf or aviation-use equipment.
Well, we could do, you said what, graded?
Well, just like, just grass, grass area, yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking if, you know, we could have a little pad there.
Yeah, a little access road?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, think of everybody as a whole, but the only problem is, is that that's a lot of problems.
Yeah. The part that really, that makes it clear from the FAA too on that one exhibit is the area highlighted in yellow. The FAA does not consider any modification or exception for the OFZ surface whatsoever. So they are, that's, that's the reason we're at the point we are right now, is they are very hard line on it, and it's been, been an existing issue for a while, and it's kind of flown under the radar.
Yeah.
And now it's, now it's not, unfortunately. So...
Been working on this four years.
What's that?
Four years.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions regarding the OFZ?
No. I'm sorry, I was trying to organize things a little bit. On the, on the 25 end of the runway at US-1 out there, what is that, the object-free zone being outside the airport fence line? Does, does, if we, if, for some reason, Sunset was able to be blocked off, does that solve this problem, or is this still a problem?
The 25 end?
Yeah.
It does not solve the 25 end.
Okay.
It's, this one will still be an issue. The, the one suggestion and proposal we've made to the FAA is during the taxiway Bravo project, it'd be a slight realignment of where taxiway Bravo ties into 25, and that would be the way to take off, the length foot off that end is we need to, to get the OFZ fully back onto property and not have the fence line in the way.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's the nice part, is the FAA has, has been agreeable to at least us addressing it in a future project, and they're not pushing for it to be done right this second.
So you're talking about at the seven end of 725, move taxiway Bravo...
That, that is a viable solution as well, is that instead of Bravo going all the way to the current end of pavement, it would stop shorter and tie in, and we would remove parts of the runway end in order to bring the OFZ fully onto the airport and have the fence line not an obstruction.
But it still doesn't solve the 25 end.
Yeah, both ends would have to happen, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not, there's not one thing to do to one end that solves the problem. It has to be done on both ends.
So we're shortening... So if, if you shorten it at both ends, what, and with everything that you have to have, what is the length of the runway wind up if you shorten it at both ends to meet the obstacle-free zone? What do we wind up with for runway length?
So it'd be roughly 48, 50. Right now, there's 5,000 length feet of pavement total, so the takeoff run and takeoff distance available and the accelerate stop distance would all be roughly 48, 48, 50. Because we would need approximately 110 feet on the seven end and 35 on the 25 end. Both of those would have to be surveyed. I'm sure there's, you know, decimals on either, so being conservative, assuming 4,850.
I feel when you're working on this, you've got to make sure it stays at 5,000 feet.
Yeah.
Because it's going to hurt businesses. It could hurt my business if corporate starts coming in again. It could hurt them coming in, so, you know, the airport keeps getting smaller.
It's got to be fine.
Yeah. And we're aware, we've been working at the airport and the FAA, we're trying to figure out any way possible to keep it at 5,000. 5,000 is that magic number for any airport, for jet traffic and insurance, and we understand that's going to be the top priority.
One point on the advisory circular that you quoted, it says the FAA will not consider modification of the OFZ surface. I haven't looked at this, but I don't know if that's a regulation. If it is not a regulation, advisory circular is advisory. And it, right in the preface that describes what it is, it states that it is one way, but not the only way. So let's, possibly, we could take a look at that and discuss potential options, but if this is not a part of the regulation, then it, that kind of language, prohibitive language, does not belong in an advisory circular.
Yeah. And that's, I'm, the, the direction that we've gotten from the FAA through the process is that they are holding to that obstacle-free zone requirement, and that's, that's unfortunately why we're in the situation we're in.
Okay. Well, it's definitely between a rock and a hard spot.
Yes.
Yeah, no kidding.
Right there.
Maybe we should just tear the whole airport down and move somewhere else. We don't have any land, though, that I can think of.
Okay.
God.
So we'll be working with the FAA over the coming months and years to figure out what the best solution is, and that's where we stand right now, is that the taxiway Bravo project and shortening is probably the easiest path forward in the FAA's eyes, but if we can figure out a way to keep the length with, through road closures and slight extensions and fence relocation, obviously, we want to pursue something like that, that's going to best, best serve the airport and its tenants.
Could you not take this, where you have the 200 here, from here to here? Could that not be, oh, no, I guess he has X amount of room he has to have here, right? Never mind.
Yep. Yeah, it has to stay at that 400-foot-wide dimension, the only other way...
On both sides.
Yeah. The only way you could narrow it up is if you restricted the aircraft that use the runway to 12,500 pounds or less, and then I believe it would shrink down to, I think your approach visibility minimums are a mile for 725, so you'd be able to get 250 feet wide, so that would limit the amount of displacement that would have to be... So that would limit the amount of displacing that would have to be done, but it's, you're still, uh, instead of it being 110 feet, maybe you're down to 85 feet, just because that width's not really, not really helping you too much. It's more so the length off the end of the runway is the bigger issue. But if, if a road closure and a, you know, a fence relocation is, is a potential and a possibility, that, that helps, helps the...
That's the most logical and the least expensive. And less time, doesn't take much time.
Right.
And we've been, like I said, we've been working on this a really long time.
That's, that's on there, you know, airport will have to weigh the options and weigh the options with the board and come up with the ideal solution.
We'll have to talk, yeah, more with the city management to get direction there.
Yep. But those are, those are essentially the two options, is either shorten runway or close roads.
Are we helping with that direction, or is it just strictly up to Colin?
Uh, no, any, I'll take any help you can, you can offer, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, we're here for a reason.
Right.
So if we come up with a recommendation and it just gets shot down in the, in the city manager's office, then it's why are we here?
Well, we'll, we'll put together something to be on the next agenda that we can vote on, that'd be...
Sure.
That'd be great.
So I'm still trying to understand, you have proposals, and maybe I missed them, you have proposals for the, the 7 end, you know, road closure, fence movement, whatever, but what about the US-1 end? It's still going to be an issue, the FAA is still going to have an issue with it, right?
Correct, yeah.
Is this plan you're going to work on, going to address that as well?
Can I ask you a question, Dan, this is something I hadn't really thought of before, but let's say we solved the issue on the 7 end, enough to the point where, is it possible to re-stripe or re-designate where the, you know?
The threshold is?
Thresholds are on the other end, so just move it down, the whole thing?
The thresholds could move, but the thresholds don't...
But you'd still have the pavement issue.
Yeah, the thresholds just change your landing distance available, the, the takeoff run, takeoff distance, and accelerate stop distance are all based on the usable pavement area. So, an option to maintain the 5,000 would be adding roughly 35 feet to the 7 end pavement length. Uh, but that would be, uh, essentially classified as a runway extension project, and we'd have to look at the runway protection zone, runway safety area, object-free area, all that, even the approaches. So that'd be, that'd be some extensive planning with the FAA, uh, to get something through like that.
But there's nothing on, there's nothing that's stopping us from that?
From that, on that end?
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing that would be stopping it would be that you still have to go through a, a runway protection zone study.
Right.
So it's a thousand feet long, 500 feet wide, out into the approach.
But I mean, if we did that, that would be the only thing, that would be the only reason, because there's nothing there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to look at the approaches, we'd have to look at obstructions, whether there's trees or the things that are out in the distance. More likely than not, a runway extension project's going to require an environmental assessment too, uh, as you're pushing closer to the water.
Right.
So, there's, there's a few other boxes that have to be checked, but as long as we get into the planning process with the FAA and start communications early, I mean, we can, if you, if the board has a recommendation and the airport's in agreement, we can...
If we got this all passed, what would be the turnaround time? I mean, if we went to the FAA, being nice, whatever, whatever we can do, and, and we actually got it to go, what would be the turnaround for that?
So we would have to, to get the ALP amended, uh, we'd have to get it into the CIP, we'd have to get on their, their planning process as far as funding. We'd have to switch around the projects that we currently have planned, uh, as long as they have long-term funding available and they're agreeable to the plan, uh, you could be looking, it could be the same timeline as the, the Taxway Bravo project, hypothetically speaking, uh, starting design in '24?
I think it's, what, you said three years, right?
Yeah, design in '24, construction '25. That's right, we would, we would have to start the environmental in '24.
Okay.
And then probably design '25, construction '26.
So by 2027, it should be complete?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, hypothetically speaking. That's, that's if the FAA is agreeable to all the proposals and we check all the boxes and the environmental comes back favorably, and they determine that there is the need, we'd have to do justifications, but it's possible.
Okay.
But you're still talking about stopping Sunset Drive, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At, um...
Because it, the first time when we were going to go and do it, we were going to put a tunnel under US-1, that was the first proposal.
Yeah.
And that was like, what, five, six, seven, eight million bucks? I mean, it was astronomical.
Yep.
It was 40.
Was that what it was? I knew it was, it was a whopper.
Yeah.
And it's like, you know, holy cow.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's just physically impossible, we're just not doing that.
Yep.
So that's why I say this is the least expensive way.
Have we looked around for other airports that have faced a similar problem and what kind of solutions they may have done with this? Is there any resource where we could go and look, look at something like that?
I know it's something we've talked a little bit about to see if there's anybody else, I know some, we're in such a unique situation with how we're hemmed in on, on two sides by this street. I'm not aware of another road and I, or another airport that's in that same exact scenario. We certainly could continue to look.
Yep. Yeah, the, uh, typically, the runway safety area extends a little bit beyond the obstacle-free zone. Uh, and most airports do have fully cleared and, and prepared runway safety areas. So the OFC, uh, is typically inbound of the runway safety area, so it doesn't end up being an issue for most other airports. But with the, there's a couple classifications of runways similar to we have here, where the, the runway safety area is actually a little bit smaller than the OFC, so the OFC ends up being the determining critical factor, so.
Well, it's, it's still a fairly radical solution to, I'm sure, most of, of the community in that area.
Been there, know exactly what's going to happen there.
So we, we, um...
But the only way we could make that to our advantage is if we, I don't know how we could do that, though. Instead of taking off to the east, if we could flip it and have everybody turn off to the west, they, you know, you know how we get the noise things? We always get the complaints about the noise. Well, if we did an opposite and going the other way, it wouldn't be as bad because they're basically going over no housing, water, and then they're already up so many feet, so it wouldn't be as annoying as the other way. I'm just speculating here. Just trying to help you out on that one.
Thank you.
Uh, if you'd close Sunset and you extend the runway to gain at the opposite end, what happens to Taxway Bravo?
Taxway Bravo would have to be extended down to the end of the runway. So it'd be a slight extension and realignment.
Is it going to encroach upon the fence with it realignment?
For a Taxway Bravo on the 7 end?
Yes.
Uh, more likely than not, it would be extending that, um, the 45-degree section a little bit to the new end. And if Suns, if, if you did go for the Sunset closer, obviously, we'd have the opportunity to relocate fence line. So the fence shouldn't be an issue in that scenario. Or at least if that scenario came to fruition, we would re, relocate the fence into an area that's not an obstruction.
Well, what I'm getting at is, are you going to hamper the entrance to the VFW?
No, I mean, that, the, I, I would think that any, any solution, any proposal would be maintaining that entrance. That would be a, a critical factor.
That, that won't be bothered because it's too far over to your left.
Yeah, the, where that 90-foot dimension is, that's where the, the fence line would likely stop and turn to the southwest to follow that OFC limit.
What's the, uh, clearance between the Taxway and the fence? Is there a minimum?
Uh, off the top of my head, the, I believe it's 65 feet from center line of the Taxway.
Is that what it is, or is that a required?
I believe that's the required dimension, I'm not 100% positive what it is. Looking at the, the aerial and the width of the pavement, it looks like we're probably pretty close to there, if not exactly at that dimension.
Well, just thinking out loud, the, if, if the solution winds up having to be close Sunset, then there has to be some kind of, of business analysis done that justifies doing that, that is a huge benefit for the city of New Smyrna and for the airport businesses and things like that.
And that's, that's part of the, uh, the environmental assessment process, is they'll do runway length justification studies and look and make sure that doing that, that, that extension to the south is justified based on, on usage, planned usage, businesses on the airfield, who needs 5,000 feet, what the, you know, what businesses would be impacted if 5,000 feet isn't achieved?
I have a question that maybe, uh, we have, I think, in our CIP list, 1129 runway extension feasibility, that we kind of put on hold because we weren't seeing the, uh, we weren't seeing the use, and we're, the FAA notified us that, and I'm sure you were, you all were here before I was, but there was a feasibility study that we had planned to do for runway 1129. Uh, and the FAA came back and told us that we needed to, uh, to see at least 500 operations a year, regular, regular use of Critical Design Group 2, which is like the Citation XLs you were talking about earlier. Aircraft that size. And one of the things that I've noticed, uh, since we've gotten Ver Tower, which is the program that, you know, we've mentioned about how we do noise, it also has the capability to track those things. And when I last checked it, we had 700 operations in the last 12, 12 months. So there may be, um, I don't know if there's a way for us to go back and say, okay, we don't want to do 1129, but, you know, it's a question we just maybe have to ask. You know, the FAA is, if we can switch it from saying, we don't want to look at 1129, but we want to look at 725.
That was where I was going next, because that's what I remembered, is that we had kind of gotten to the point with 725 where you can't do it, and it's going to wind up to something less than 5,000 feet. Now, I guess that looks at 48-50 or whatever, okay?
Because...
And, and the discussion that we were having was, is, well, um, 1129, we have the room for it, but we had that issue with the FAA saying it didn't meet the aircraft movement criteria, okay, for the next class of airplanes.
But the issue we ran into 1129, as we were looking at, is we're going to run into the same issues. If we, we try to extend the runway on 1129, we've got US-1, and we've got, of course, the, uh, community of, uh, Isles, Islesboro?
Islesboro, that was the problem.
So, you know, um, looking at, this is an unpopular thing to talk about closing a road, but is it as unpopular as, as considering, you know, relocation of homes and things like that, which would just seem to me like too big of a, a hurdle, so...
We actually voted on that, we talked about that, and a couple years ago, and the city can come in and, if they want to, and I was totally objective of this, is, um, they can come in and seize the houses in that area, intimate domain for the airport. Not all, but whatever in, is in the way. And I clearly stated on that, when we did do that, that I was not for that for, at all because of the fact that people work really hard to come to Florida because they want to live in a beautiful state, they want to be near the water, and for anybody to live in that section, and we actually say, okay, well, you know, we're coming in and we're taking 20 houses or 10 houses or whatever, and they've worked their whole lives to come down here to Florida to enjoy themselves, I'm sorry. I mean, that is not right, you know? So this way that we have now, what you're talking about, was the best way because nobody was getting hurt as far as housings, communities, or anything like that. All we are doing is extending the road, closing, locking it off, because they have a way to get in and out. I mean, you know, it's just logical, I mean, sure, they got to go here and one, and then they got to go here and go here. But you know what, all of us have to take detours when we go certain places. I mean, so that, that's the only reason I'm saying what I'm saying, is because I've already been through that once.
Yep.
And I just don't think that's right. That's my personal opinion.
Agreed. Okay, so what's the next step?
I think we would, um, go back to the drawing board a little bit and talk to the city, to city management, discuss with FAA, and, uh, look at our CIP plan for the next couple of years and see, if we can't put something together to come back with you all to, to vote on next time we meet.
When, when the analysis was done of the, um, of the 1129 extension, did, was there something that actually showed how big an impact that would have been to Alsboro? Was it, I mean, are we, are we in?
I'd have to look, I don't remember exactly, but I know it was, it affected, um, I want to say around 15 homes.
15 homes.
It was significant, it might have been 10, but it was a significant number.
Double digits.
Right.
Is it, uh, shown in the alternatives for the master plan?
It was showing alternatives, like you could also extend, uh, 11, you know, into, um, US-1, but that required tunneling, or it required some severe detour, um, you know, for US-1, which is very cost prohibitive, so. Um, this actually came up, I found a letter from 1942, when this airport was built, that was around the same issue. Uh, they were wanting to extend the runway, but they couldn't because of the railroad on one end and US-1 on the other. So this issue is not new, um, it's been, 80 years ago, they were dealing with it.
Okay.
I think we have the paperwork somewhere around, don't we?
I don't know.
I, I'm pretty sure we did.
The master plan?
Anything, oh, I'm sorry?
I think we have the paperwork, I'll look at, I keep a lot of stuff, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I have, I have the feasibility study, if anybody wants to see it, uh, for 1129, or not, it wasn't, I'm sorry, not the feasibility study, but it was a, um...
Like an impact study?
Impact study.
Right, we had it on both, we had it on both units, I mean, this way?
Yes.
And then the other way?
There was, there was information on 725 as well.
Oh, yeah.
So some of the, some of the, some of the base groundwork, legwork has been done.
Yeah, got a lot.
Okay. Next item?
Moving right along.
Yeah, one, one more thing to touch on, uh, is a part of, I don't know if y'all remember, but as part of the, uh, the Taxway Charlie, the original design that we did, uh, that included, one of the bid alternatives was a new holding bay that'd be, uh, basically reconstructed, similar location where the holding bay is now, but it was going to be the seven bays with the grass infields. And, uh, I think there was some, some dissatisfaction with the, the layout and kind of the, uh, the geometry of that with having the grass in between all the different little taxi lanes. Uh, I just wanted to report to, to the board that, uh, the, the newest air advisory circular just came out not too long ago, and they did refine their, uh, direction and their, uh, requirements for that. The old advisory circular, one of the, the first attachments there, highlighted a couple, couple sections talking about the islands between the parking positions. They were very keen and, and their exhibits, there wasn't great direction from the FAA, but they, they kind of decided as an ADO and, uh, the region, that those holding bays would all be grass infields because that would be more cost-effective, uh, because there was less pavement. But in practice, uh, we did install a couple of them at a couple different airfields, I think Daytona did one?
Daytona, Flagler, did.
Yeah. Daytona, Flagler, Kissimmee, they all had this style with the grass infields. From a construction standpoint, it was, um, to put it nicely, a pain. It, it made paving very difficult, it made the drainage very difficult, uh, the FAA got a lot of feedback on that. So in their, their most recent advisory circular update that they came out with in, uh, I believe, March of this year, March, April this year, they did clarify that the islands can either be grass or properly marked pavement. So if we do move forward with that, that new holding bay in, in a future project, if we take that and, and package it into a new bid, we would be able to just pave the entire area and do it with paint markings instead of having grass infields. So it would have a more, more universal use, and there wouldn't be, there'd still be markings, and it would be marked the same as we had shown the design with the grass infields, but those infields would then just be painted green or with a hatch marking, just to show that they're not intended for use. just to show that they're not intended for use, but they're available there for use. So that, that brings a little pavement back. It makes the construction process easier too. So I just wanted to report, report back on that and let you know, I know there's, most of the people we've talked to, most of the users in airports, they've been not too thrilled with the, the grass infield version. So it's kind of a, just a nice update to bring you guys to let you know that they have changed their direction and their, they were very, very strict on that being grass infields and not just a large paved area. And now that entire stance and direction is eased significantly. So.
Up until today.
Yes.
This subject matter was referred to as a run-up area, which is where my complaints came from. Now you're showing a picture of a four-engine turbine aircraft that doesn't have to do a run-up and you're calling it something different.
Yeah, the.
Well, this airport don't need a holding bay. In my eyes, it needs a run-up area.
Right. And these, these are the run-up areas. They just, they don't use the run-up area for a design purpose in the AC anymore. They just refer to them all as holding bays. And in true FAA fashion, they, they kind of cater all their graphics and everything to the largest aircraft in existence for commercial airports, instead of showing, you know, aircraft that are more prevalent on the 95% of the airfields in America. That's just, that's, that's their way of doing things. Everything's kind of geared toward the larger people instead of, you know, all the mid-sized GAs like us.
I don't see any of these recommended configurations working at this airport for the airplanes that are at this airport. Because if you're going to turn into the wind to do your run-up, how the heck are you going to do it on that thing?
So that, that is the benefit now is there, there won't be any eduliting. There won't be anything restricting an, like an aircraft from turning in, following the, the pavement markings that we have, but then turning in whatever direction you want to. That, that is the nice part with the, with the new direction. The old direction, they were forcing you essentially to go with the grass infields so that you were stuck to the pavement that's there. And the new direction, you'll be able to pave it all. It'll all be at the same grades. It would all just be a smooth transition. It'd just be a different color on the ground. So once you pulled into one of the, the quote unquote bays, you'd still be able to turn whichever way you need to into the wind and, and use it as you're using it now. So the, the purpose of the, the holding bay is to provide additional levels of safety to make sure that you've got wingtip clearance if there are several aircraft using it at once. The reason that they went away from, I'll pull up the old, you know, a lot of the, the old style is kind of like you see on the screen now where it was just a big area that you pulled into and you'd be able to turn whatever direction you wanted. And there were a few instances at several different airports where planes clipped wings as they're going off and didn't realize it because it wasn't a significant enough impact and they were still taking off. So it became, became a safety issue and that's what brought along the, the grass infields and the separation and having your full taxiway object-free areas, your wingtip clearance. And fast forward to them actually building a few, they were not received well. So now we're back to, is still doing the layout of the holding bays and having the, the lanes and paths to drive, but everything paved in between it so that you'd still be able to use it like you would just a vast expanse. So it's, it's almost like it's the FAA's version of a compromise there.
And this, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it's, it's still, it, it provides the levels of safety and the direction to pilots that are unfamiliar with, with using a holding bay. They have their designated slot where they know they're not going to be in anyone else's way, but now you have the freedom to.
This is just one loc, one location somewhere on the airport. It's not at the end of each runway.
Correct. Yeah, unless, the only way we would have something at the end of each runway is if we added that to the, to the ALP and that was something that we put into the planning. But I think we're, we're quite restricted on space on a few of the runway ends, like the runway seven end. I think it would have to be inbound of the taxiway and I'm not sure there's object-free area clearance enough to have that.
Okay. Because, I mean, some of our aircraft go out to the end of the runway, or at taxiway at the end of the runway, turn into the wind, do your run-up and then go.
Yep.
But if you got to tack, do a run-up somewhere else and then taxi 5,000 feet somewhere, you may end up getting a foul plug by the time you get to the end.
Yep.
I'm not a big fan of this holding area. I think it's way beyond what we need, but.
Understood.
Well, do we have a, this, at the first sentence of this thing, it says to enhance capacity. Do we have a capacity issue that's driving us to consider putting this in?
I, I believe when, when Epic, when they send out their waves of traffic going up, they, they fill the holding bay as we have it now. They're usually sending, how many aircraft at once? Six?
Yeah, there could be four, five or six.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if we had a, I think, could I just say that what, what we're showing here is not what we're doing at our airport. It's just a, it's just a generic picture of what somebody's done.
Right.
The area that we have now, we could do nothing. We can leave it the way it is. Like there's an area, you know, it used to be the old runway where we're using as a run-up area now. All that was suggested was is that if we resurface that, if we put new asphalt down, that we have markings, since it is kind of designated as our run-up area. I mean, I, I still use the word run-up area. I know they call it hunt-up. But that's what it is. It's just a run-up area for the flight schools. There's really nobody else using it. And Airgate, I'm sorry, Epic is really the only one you'll ever see out there, for the mo, that I've seen. I've actually put in vert tower, I haven't looked at it, but we put a geo fence there so I could track who's using it. I haven't looked at it lately, but the last I checked, 99% of it was Epic. And there's probably, you know, 50 airplanes a day that are using it. I mean, it's just that area. They're just now going and like you said, turning into the wind. I think all that, this was, and I have seen a drawing that you did for our airport. It looks a little different. We don't have it today, but we could share it next time where I could just send it to you individually. I think it'd make more sense.
Yes.
You can see what we're doing. Nothing's really changed except the paint. It's just got everybody kind of lined up the same way. Am I speaking correctly or incorrectly? Because I think it's just the markings, the pay, asphalt's not changing, the shape's not changing.
Correct.
Am I right?
Yes.
Basically just redone. Now, we don't.
Seven, yeah, seven bays was the design.
So.
But that's inclusive of the, the ends. So they're.
It's kind of like what I'm seeing them do now. They go over, they kind of all line up. So.
Yeah.
But like I said before, we don't, that pavement, we would prefer to, to replace it or to rehab it just because it is in bad shape. But it's not getting landed on. It's not get, you know, it's not getting hard use. You know, it probably lasts a little while longer with them if we didn't do anything. The only reason why we like to do something is now we, we got the money. We like to rehab stuff when we've gotten, we get financial help. That's the only reason.
And right now, that area being the, the current run-up area, it is part of what used to be one of the crosswind runways. Now it's one of the abandoned runways.
Yeah.
So in the, our, our funding partner's eyes, if, if we're not going to use it, they'd like to see the pavement come out. It's just less pavement to maintain. So if we can find a use like the, the run-up area that we have, that we designed with taxiway Charlie, it's, it's a way of keeping that paved area there and keeping additional pavement for the airport.
See, it wouldn't cost us much to fix that.
Hmm?
It wouldn't cost us much to fix that. I mean, to re, what's, what's the cost of resurfacing that area?
It'd be, it'd probably be somewhere in the ballpark of a half million to a three-quarter million to completely reconstruct it.
Oh.
Because it is, I mean, tho, those abandoned pavement areas are, I, I think they've had maybe one overlay since they were constructed in
Oh.
the 40s.
Wow.
So it's, I mean, they're, they're in very poor shape.
Yeah.
And the one saving grace, why they're able to hold up as long as they are is they don't get the landing traffic. They're just getting slow taxi traffic and pretty much standstill.
We'll be having to go to our new mayor and ask him for some more money.
Well, the, I'm still trying to figure out why we're talking about holding bays when.
Yeah. Holding, holding bay, run-up area, interchangeable terms now as far as FAA. They just, they use holding bay exclusively.
Okay. So the graphics that you've been showing about the holding bay that, that we've been talking about, are you talking about doing any of that for the run-up area that is actually being used now? Or is this a, a new concept?
No, this, we, we've already, I could probably pull up the design drawings pretty quickly. If you guys wanted to step through a different gen item, we can come back to it at the end and I can show you what the, the design was from taxiway Charlie and it'll make a lot more sense.
Well, that, that was what I was remembering is that we were going to do something there.
I, I think I have it here. I have the ALP. She, do you want me to pull it? Is it? Is it not? Okay. I might not have that. While he's doing that, if you like, I could give you our update from the airport side.
Okay, that's good.
So just a few quick things from our, from our end. I recently, at the end of July, beginning of August, attended the 53rd Annual Florida Airport Council Conference in Orlando. It was my first opportunity to go to something like that. That's something that a lot of aviation leaders attend. So I was able to visit with other airport directors, other airport managers. It was a great opportunity to kind of network and, and learn about what's happening in the industry. We had noise comp, you know, speakers talking about noise. We had speakers talking about finance. We had speakers talking about the, you know, the different things that pertain to our, to our industry. So it was very interesting. It was very valuable. Came back with a lot of ideas from that. I was able to make some contacts. And I think it's more resources for us as we continue to learn about our airport and all the things that are facing us. We, you should have it in front of you, but we, the latest airport diagram just came out September 8th. They fixed a few more items. It's still not perfect, but it's getting closer. Gary, you'll notice that they have your taxiway connector there, Foxtrot, is in the correct position now.
Mm-hmm.
We still have a couple more things that they're missing and Jacob already has that, is already working with the, with the FAA on that. So we're hoping that this next, by October, that every, all the issues will be fixed and it'll be. But it's continued to look better and better. One of the things that's not on here I meant to bring is we revised our noise abatement flyer a little bit. I've, I've put it, every, the information on one page and that's been helpful with the flight schools because they can hand it out. Amber Riddle got it at their most recent instructor meeting where they had all their new instructors, our new instructor orientation where they had, what, I think Jim was, Jim Zylor, the tower manager was here. I think they had what, 250 or some, 250 new flight instructors. Shared it with Phoenix East Aviation who has about 60 aircraft and they, an Epic. So that's been something that seems to be a helpful tool because all the information's on one page for them. And on the backside, Jim had a great idea to put this airport diagram on the backside. So we're going to do that when we hand these, when they have these noise abatement cards out. So they'll have the airport diagram on, on the back and on the front will be our noise abatement procedures. Just one more tool that we continue to use to try to educate the community and the pilots as much as we can.
So that's all, that's all done?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to get one of those. I'll swing by and pick one up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. The, I'm going to turn it over to Jacob a little bit, give you an equipment update and staff update and also update you on a project that he's been working on for driving training.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. So, yeah, equipment wise, as you see the picture there, that's our actual bush hog we just got, which has been monumental for a lot of reasons because the old one was breaking down a lot. And, you know, it's good to keep our grass short, obviously. Our consultant, he mentioned us that we got one of the cleanest airports. So it's just a little tipping or a feather in the cap for our guys that work very hard. We've got some new preventative maintenance stuff coming or that we have now just to keep up with all of the trucks and small equipment, large equipment, whatever. We work closely with maintenance ops to make sure that everything, we've got everything on schedule now. And then also with the preventative maintenance side, we've got some new equipment to help with that, electric grease guns and so forth. So we're keeping up best we can. And so we've also bought some new other equipment, you know, just electric stuff that kind of cuts down on us keeping up with two-cycle, you know, mixing oil and gas and so forth. As far as the other things, we have, you know, generator, we have a generator that we got at back up and running. And then our X lights, we make sure we got those on a schedule as well, just in, just in the event we do have to shut down a runway, we don't have an issue with those. So as far as equipment wise, you know, I think we're pretty up to par. We're auctioning off one of our old mowers to get some money back on that. We don't really have anything broken right now. So knock on wood somewhere. We're doing pretty good. And then we can go to the next slide.
Just going to update everybody on that. Just still waiting on a transfer switch for the airfield lighting generator. So right now we have no backup power for our pilot control lighting. If that went down in the middle of the night, we would be without pilot control lighting for, until we can come out and manually switch it. We're having just trouble with the manufacturer, right? It just.
Yeah, with that, I talked to the company that's been working to do or take care of our generator. And we're waiting on the transfer switch from the manufacturing plant. What he tells me is that's backed up. I assume that's true. So we're still trying to get that shipped.
And then safety switch for the tractor. Just, just sharing these little, these little details with you just so that you know. We're trying to do things that improve the safety for our employees. Safety switch would allow if somebody, you know, happened to slip off the seat or something like that, it'll kill the engine. And these tractors are about, you know, they're like small farm equipment. So they're, they're pretty good sized.
Staff wise, we just recently, on Tuesday, one of our senior guys, Dennis Roblinsky, he finally retired and he's happy about that. We're happy for him. We had a little get-together with him, thanked him for his service and everything. And we gave him a gift a little while back privately, just for him to know that we appreciate him and all the work that he put in and the seniority he had in training our new guys. So we'll miss Dennis, but, you know, we're happy for him to get to his retirement side. We did add two new employees, Luke and Tom, our two new employees. They both have good experience with equipment and landscaping experience. So they've, they've come on and been phenomenal workers to work with Melvin. Melvin's taken on a good senior role with training them. I've worked with them pretty extensively now with some driver training and just to make sure that they have everything they, they need so they can succeed. And they also enjoy working here because, you know, the airport's a fun place to work. I love it. And they seem to be loving it as well. So that's been really good. Also, we got some just new equipment for them so that way, you know, personal protection wise and some new shirts, just again, just to make sure that they're comfortable and safe. And then mentioning that drivers' training with them, this is, this is just one of our kind of a, a quick guide. That's like our practices and procedures on the right there. So that way, we are updating the airport wide, both tenants, you know, team air tenants, commercial tenants, and then contractors and so forth, including our employees. So that way, you know, we're doing everything we can in our power to reduce, you know, runway incursions as they have happened. So we're trying to reduce as much as we can, give as much literature out. Like I said, I've worked with our new employees and then this is going to be, we have both a whole, it's a course. That's, it's pretty basic, but it goes through everything you need, including a self-assessment. And then we have a separate kind of quick guide that I've put together. So that way, that, that goes. GAI is going to put it together with contractors on their closing documents or whatever. So that way they have that. We know that their guys have been through it. So there's really no excuse for when something happens, you know, we're all humans, things happen, but at least we're trying to, we're doing everything we can to mitigate issues. And so that's, that's something that was relatively recent, but it seems to be working quite well with our new guys and, you know, we'll keep working on it as we go.
Sounds good. Thanks, Jacob. I want to say this is just an excerpt. He spent some, some time developing this guide and it's about, I think, about 12 pages long and really good information. And I appreciate the time and effort you put on that. I think it was, we shared it with Tower, the Tower manager. And I think, look forward to getting this in action with some of our commercial tenants who do drive on the, on the airport. Just want to talk briefly about our, or actually if you, you want to jump back in since you're, I'll give it back to Dan here real quick.
It works perfectly and no issues? It's about 10 seconds, you know? Getting back to the aircraft run-up area, this is just a Google Earth image of what's out there currently. There's the, the three bays where the aircraft all pull up. Oops, I'm sorry. So, that, this is the existing condition right now. Obviously, you can see from the aerial, it is very old pavement. It's in poor condition. Right now, the aircraft come down Taxway Echo. They make a right-in, and then they have three options to pull in and use for run-up, and then also exiting, and it's kind of a circular traffic pattern motion. And that's just what we're showing in the, the existing conditions. And then, as far as the, the proposed condition for the run-up area, the original design was essentially turning it into seven bays. Sorry about that. Turning into seven bays with the grass and fields. And with the new FAA direction, the, the area shown in green on there would not need to be grass anymore. Those could all be paved and be at the same elevation as the, the run-up, run-up holding bays as they're shown and designed. And what that does is it maximizes the use in the area while keeping us clear of the, the other crossing taxiways like Taxway Alpha and Delta. So, that was, that, that kind of falls in line with the, the direction of those exhibits we were showing, is this is the, this is the geometry that the FAA is, is giving us for direction on how to lay it out. Their old direction was to have the infills be grass with drainage structures to help with the drainage and getting the water out, and that was, it's been received very poorly by contractors because actually constructing this pavement with all these different fillets and widenings is extremely difficult when it comes to asphalt, as far as getting it all smooth and getting it constructed. But if you're able to pave, you know, it would probably be eight to 10 lanes of asphalt. It's, it's a lot easier on them, and you end up with a lot better product, because you're just, just doing one, one expansive area of asphalt instead of doing all this intricate paving.
Does it have standing water? Will it have standing water on it?
No, it would be graded to actually, it would be graded for all the sheet flow into the, into the grass area on either side of Taxway Echo. So, we would, we would adjust the grading in a way to make it so it drains well in all directions, and that would be part of the permitting process with St. John's. But the, the new direction allows us to essentially turn all of these, these green areas into more asphalt, essentially. And then, that allows for, obviously, they'll be, they'll be marked. So, the pavement markings in those areas, there would be a, a non-movement area boundary, essentially. So, the, the aircraft would have a queue of where to pull up to, to do their run-up areas. But once everything's paved, then the, the infills, instead of being grass, like I said, would either be painted, painted green to have the appearance of grass, or it would be painted with like a, a yellow hatch marking to show that it's not technically usable asphalt, but it would be unrestricted as far as whether a pilot needed to turn a certain direction into the wind. The, the paint markings on the ground would just serve as guidance for the pilots as far as how to stay clear of other aircraft within the area, and how to, like, operate and run up safely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate your time and coming here. Thanks for presenting that information. Just getting back to, kind of finally, the final item I had was really just a kind of a, an update on this event, November 12th. If you don't mind, I'll ask Celeste to give us an update of a few things she's been working on, and Jim, if you're comfortable with sharing a few things that you've been working on, and then we can summarize kind of where we're at to the group of our, our event. If you'd like, I can start, or whoever would like to go first, feel free.
Basically, what I've done is, I've got the food trucks. I've got a B-25 coming, a C-47 coming. At least, we have talked, and we've made that decision, but I told them to make sure that they penciled it in on their calendar, because I didn't want anything to happen. So, after we got the approval from the city that, yes, we could do it, we're just getting back in touch with everybody and telling them, you know, about the food trucks, how many we want, how many people we think is going to be there. We're just taking an educated guess on that. I think there's going to be, his finger's smaller than my finger. I think we're going to have more people than we think we're going to have, because first of all, it's free. Free parking. It's on a Saturday, and everybody wants to do something. And it's from 10 to 5 or 4?
4.
10 to 4. So, that's kind of, at this point, that is where I am at.
So, what is your estimate? I saw in his paperwork that it prepared for the city to review it. You had 2,000, right?
Yeah, we decided to up it, because the problem is, I, I think we're going to have a lot of people, because people are really excited about this, and we haven't had anything like it in a long time. And it's free, and we've always had to pay for it before. And we're having an area for the children, so they can bring their whole family. So, I, I think we're, I think we're going to be totally surprised. I really do. The only thing that would make it really crappy is if the weather turns out to be icky. But we are going to have static displays, and we are selling T-shirts, because everybody that I've talked to wants a T-shirt. And the guys from Titusville, they're going to have their, their own aesthetic, and they're actually bringing T-shirts of their warbirds and stuff like that. I'm assuming that's what they're doing. They said that we're going to. And I think we might go and get some of, we're going to put flyers in all the stores down on Canal. And then, possibly, we may get some of the businesses want to participate. They might want to have, you know, like a, I don't know what that size is, a small tent, and then have some things in there. Some people have some artwork that are airplanes, stuff like that. So, we're kind of thinking about something in that neighborhood, besides all the food and the kids' stuff.
Now, the paperwork I saw that the city, was presented to the city in the commission meeting, said 75th anniversary celebration and veterans' recognition, or something along that line.
Yes. So, if you like, I could go next, if you want. That way, I can kind of give you the whole, I'll give you the whole, so starting from the top. So, the date, November 12th, the time, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. At the, at the, the main entrance there, at the airport administrative building. The, the entrance will be right next to us. There's a gate there, walk-through gate. Right there in front of our building is where we'll have the static display. We have about 10 aircraft committed so far, 12, one helicopter, potentially more. So, we'll, you know, if anything, we might be running out of room. That's okay. We're going to have a kid's zone, so we have bounce house, slide, obstacle thing. You know, those kids that love the little inflatable things. Stilt walker doing like, he's very entertaining, kind of walks around and does balloon animals, things like that. The, in the kid's zone, face painting, and then, obviously, the food trucks, like we talked about. So, the whole idea is, is to have just a, just a day when people can come in, see some cool airplanes, maybe have a hot dog, and then, I know we're going to have, hopefully, the VFW is going to participate. We talked to them a little bit the other day. I know you've, you've probably talked to them more than I have.
I talked to Tony at post 4250, and, and he said that they would be really glad to participate. I mean, the airport's in their front yard, and he, he asked if we would like to have an honor guard?
Yes.
Or some, some formal presentation from them, and I told him yes. And so, he's, and as soon as I can get a flyer and go over there, and my plan from the veteran's side was to hit all of the, all of the New Smyrna Beach.
We should have a flyer.
American Legion, VFW, all those, and, and give them personal invitations to come.
Has everybody basically, you know, given you the go? I mean, like, they're really interested in that?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
What about the, did you ever get ahold of the Spurcey-Crete Jazz Band from the school, high school?
No, I did not.
Okay.
So, we, the flyer is, I know.
Oh, okay.
I know the flyer is kind of the next big thing. We're working on a banner that should, I should have that back by tomorrow, the artwork on that. We've got about three different locations. We can put it up on this, one place on the South Causeway, one place on the North Causeway, where the city puts their stuff. So, I'm hoping from that artwork and between your artwork, that we can have something within the next week or so in your hand.
Okay.
Or, or digital, whatever we like, and simultaneously working, working on a T-shirt. At least one design, trying for two. So, we've ordered a lot of the nuts and bolts. We've got everything ironed out as far as, you know, picnic tables, garbage cans, garbage bags, barricades, all the kind of the behind-the-scenes stuff. We're barking on volunteers now.
We've got the fire truck.
Fire trucks. We've got those.
So, is there still a veteran theme where there's going to?
Yes.
You had mentioned one-time skydivers and the flag, and maybe do something with the...
So, the, the whole, so that's a big thing we haven't talked about yet, is the fact that, I don't know if I shared it with you, but the, the whole, the aerial part, except for skydiving, we could, we might still be able to do that, but the, we had talked about having paddy wag staff and some things like that. We found out from Steve Clegg, who's been dealing with the FAA on this, that we can't do it, there's a baseball tournament that same day. They can't have anybody in the sports complex. Well, there's going to be 500 people over there from 8 to 8. So, that put a wrench in our, actually having a, a formal air show. We could still have somebody fly by. We could still, the airport will still be open, but we can't shut the airport down and have somebody doing aerobatics over the airport. So, that was a bummer.
No balloons either.
So, the, does that eliminate?
No balloons. Cannot have any balloons whatsoever.
I can't even...
I mean, going up tandem, no.
No, no, nothing like that.
Can't do, we can't do that.
Does that eliminate the skydivers?
See, that's a question that I think we're not 100% sure on, because of, Jim and I have to talk about that more. We don't know.
Okay.
We'd like to, but the kind of the kids in the tournament was a surprise. We didn't know anything about that until recently.
Well, what we've got to know is the next time we put on an air show, we've got to know in advance, like, you know, a long time in advance, and then the, the sports complex won't schedule anything.
Right.
Okay. Is, is there, is there some kind of a, is it going, is there even a need for an agenda, okay, for when things happen during the time from 10 to 4? If we're not having an air show, and there's not going to be jumpers or this or that, do you even need an agenda? Do you just people come in and, and experience the event, or? Because, like for the VFW, those guys would want to know what time from 10 to 4, we would want them to come and do an honor garden, or something like that.
For sure. I'd like something for them, at least.
I think we can, I think we can put something together.
Okay.
You tell us what, you know, you've got, and then we'll just work out a timeline.
Otherwise, it is kind of come and go as you please, you know? Other than, as far as the, just coming in experience.
An opening. We're going to have an opening, you know, and it's going to be a wow factor. And, you know, it might be that we can use them at the opening of, of the show. I mean, basically, that would be good, you know? To have the veterans, you know, right at the beginning, so that if they want to stay, they can, or if they'd like to go and do something else later, they could.
Have them be there whenever Russ speaks.
Yeah.
Just schedule it that same time.
So, that would be good.
Okay. And, and that's in the plan for Russ to come and, and?
I'm sure he is coming, because he'll bring his kids. I'm pretty sure about that one.
Okay.
Everybody that knows coming.
That'd be great. I mean, I didn't know, I don't, that, that's something I didn't know.
I'm sure he's going.
We, yeah. Will you talk to him, or?
Yeah, absolutely. He was here five minutes ago.
He was, yeah.
All right.
What else?
Well, if you jump really quick to member remarks, I don't have any, and I've got to go.
I'm done, as far as...
Where are we on the agenda, Tammy?
That's it.
That's it?
This is the last thing.
Okay.
We are going to change that, that little thing that you just saw. We're taking out the, did you take the balloon, was the balloon out in that?
Yeah, the balloon is out.
Okay, the balloon's out.
This is just a rough draft, yeah.
We might put like a warbird in there or something.
Well, I, I like the, the fact that it's the day after Veterans Day, and, and the proposal that went to the commission actually said 75th anniversary and veterans' recognition.
Right.
Okay.
And that's not a problem.
So, we need to figure out, on the veterans' recognition part, how, how we're going to do that, when the VFW guys need to come over, that, that kind of thing.
Let me ask you, how many veterans do you think will be there?
Well, I was planning on taking the flyer that you guys and prepare, and take it to all of the different veterans' organizations that are in New Smyrna, and invite them to come.
What do you think the total number would be? I have something in my mind, that's the reason I'm asking.
I was thinking, 100, 200, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, okay. All right, can't do that. Okay. I mean, that's fine. My ideal, we couldn't do that. Yeah, let's go for it.
Can we give them a gift of some kind? I mean, it's appreciation, or?
That's what I was thinking. We can't, not what you and I are thinking. You know, I know, well, I know what I was thinking of, but because of the number he just gave me, we don't have enough of them.
Oh.
Well, I, I don't...
No, no, I don't think I was thinking the same thing you were.
Oh, I was thinking...
Well, no, I, well, I was just thinking even just, yeah, T-shirt.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
And then, and, but have it themed as of where it's, like, appreciate, you know, something appreciate, or thank you.
So, we'll have some special T-shirts for the veterans.
From the airport, thank you. Thank you for your service, or some type of, you know, so it's a gift.
And it would be any veteran. It doesn't have to be any special world, World War, Korea, Vietnam. Just any veteran that comes, gets recognized.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because I know the DAR, the Jane Sheldon chapter of the DAR, asked me if they could bring and put a canopy or two just for the veterans, and, you know, like a veterans' rest where, because a lot of veterans are older, and, and provide them with a bag chair to sit down in, and a, and a cold drink, and a baked good. So, the DAR is interested in, in coming and doing something like that.
But are we having, did you get, did you get the benches or anything like that? The stands, you know, how we, the city has those.
They're there if we want them, so we can get them, yes.
We're talking about, you know, like...
But I think we talked about how it might be difficult for them to step.
Well, that, and it would be hot, because we wouldn't have anything over, but if you had a tent or something like that?
I was, I was just going to bring a couple of canopies, and they, and they have a banner that, they're actually preparing a banner that says DAR.
I know where we have some stackable chairs.
Rest or veterans' recognition or something.
Plastic chairs, a lot of them that we could set out. We have some stackable plastic chairs that are just real easy to, to bring out.
Oh, that would be great.
We have access, access to them, and I don't know how many we have, but I have to guess it was 30 or 40, but...
They did at the Speedway for Memorial Day. They had several areas set up for veterans to get out of the sun, and just sit down for a few minutes and have a cold drink, and it was huge. Because it was, especially in May, it was brutal that weekend up there, so.
That would be good, if you have that, and get the chairs, like you're talking about. The only other thing would be maybe if we got one, I don't really know though. I was thinking about, you know, the kids like the step-up thing, like you go into the football game, you know?
Blazers, yeah.
And we might have maybe one or two of those, like one on one side and one on another. I don't know. We'll have to look.
Okay.
You know?
Anything else?
Not at this moment, but there might be something. You never know.
How about you?
Can I answer?
I'm, I'm good as well. Mr. Mitchell?
Let's call it in.
Okay. Call it in. All right. Then we'll adjourn this November 22nd. I saw you put a, a chart up. Does that?
Does everybody can agree on the 2023 schedule?
Oh, where is that thing?
Okay. Can we, so have we seen this before? Or did you come up and ask for our agreement, or what? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I just drafted it up with the, you guys to share with the next meeting.
Tell me what the dates are, I think, on mine.
No, I was going to ask one more question. Do we have another meeting? Is there a December meeting?
There is not a December meeting. Our next meeting will be in January.
In January. Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Okay. All right.
This is all my stuff about the show.
So, I guess we're adjourned then?
If we have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, adjourn.